Please, can I welcome everyone to this meeting of council in the council chamber at Castle Hill Winchester. The first item of business this evening are the minutes of the previous meetings of the council. Members, the minutes of the ordinary meeting of council held on twenty seventh of February are set on pages five to nineteen of your agenda pack. The extraordinary meeting of nineteenth of March twenty twenty five on pages twenty one to twenty six. And also the annual meeting on fourteenth of May twenty twenty five on pages twenty seven to thirty one. Are these agreed as a correct record?
Agreed.
Thank you. The next agenda item is disclosures of interests. Are there any disclosures of interests to be made regarding the business before us this evening? Councillor Todd.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I need to declare that I have disclosable pecuniary interest in respect of items probably three and six. Due to my additional role as a Hampshire County councillor, however, as there is no material conflict of interest regarding these items, I have a dispensation granted by the Audit and Governance Committee that enables me to speak and vote on these matters.
Thank you. Thank you. Councillor Porter.
Thank you. I would like to echo those for my position as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, same declaration.
Thank you. Thank you. Councillor Jonathan Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The same declaration as well for myself. Thank you.
Councillor Pett.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a similar dispensation but for the reason that I'm the Winchester-appointed member of the South Dales Datchell Park Authority.
Apologies. Members, the first two months of my mayoral year have been busy. A few days after mayoral making, I attended Trinity's annual big sleepout fundraising event at Winchester Cathedral. And I was one of the four judges of the shelter building competition. We raised forty thousand pounds on the day. Some of the many other events attended included Winchester Go LD Sports Day on twenty second of May, the Friends of King Alfred Bus's fortieth Birthday on thirty first of May, a service on twenty second June to commemorate hundred years of Winchester Royal British Legion Women's Section, the Spashort College Group's hundred and twenty fifth year celebration on twenty sixth June, Hampshire Scouts Annual Review and AGM on twenty ninth June, and last week on fifth of July, a mass bands concert by the band and bugles of the Rifles, together with the Salamanca and Waterloo bands at Winchester College. With regards to my forthcoming charities event, please can I remind councillors that on nineteenth of July, it is the family activity scavenger hunt trail and on twenty ninth of August, there is to be a lunchtime performance of classical music by Ukrainian artists. Then on nineteenth September, there's a talk at Abbey House, Life in Quizzing by Kevin Ashman. Tickets are now on sale and please contact me for further details. Finally, this evening, I'm very pleased to announce that regarding the recent King's birthday honours, I have written to the following recipients. One, Professor Sarah Greer, Vice Chancellor, University of Winchester, a CBE for services to higher education. Julie Dawes, Chief Nurse and Deputy Chief Executive, Hampshire Hospital's NHS Foundation, an MBE for services to nursing and NHS. Three, James Graham Hatchley of Alsford, lately Deputy Chair of Senior Independent Director at Great Ormond Street Hospital for Children, NHS Foundation Trust, an MBE for services to fundraising in the NHS. And fourth, Wendy Elizabeth Ross Durley of Durley, a Lead Practitioner and Child Protection Coordinator at St Christopher's Free School, Southampton, an MBE for the services to early years of education. And lastly, Brian Cole of Bishop's Waltham, on-call firefighter, Hampshire and Isle of Wight Fire and Rescue Service, a BEM for services to the community in Bishop's Waltham. Mr. May's bearer, thank you accompanying me this evening. Thank you. Leader, do you have any announcements?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, indeed, I do. I have three things to announce. The first is that Winchester City Council has been marked as the top-performing district council in the country for our work on the climate crisis. Climate Emergency UK has scored all UK councils for their performance on addressing the climate crisis and Winchester City Council has been awarded a score of sixty eight percent overall, the highest score of any district council and indeed higher than any county council as well. The city council scored particularly highly in the categories of buildings and heating and planning and land use, reflecting both our work to increase the energy and efficiency of our buildings and housing stock and the carbon reduction policies in the emerging local plan. Collaboration and engagement was also recognised as a particular strength of the council. I'd like to thank everyone who's worked so hard to make this happen. Like the forecast ninety six percent reduction in the city council's direct carbon emissions, this is only happening because everyone has pulled together and gone above and beyond in pursuit of this goal. I'd like to thank Councillor Lerni for leading the work and all the councillors and cabinet members who's brought it to life in their areas and I'd like to ask the Chief Executive to thank her team for the great work they've done in every single part of the organisation as well. My second announcement is that Winchester City Council has received gold, official gold accreditation from the Domestic Abuse Housing Alliance, recognising the council's efforts with regards to its support for those experiencing domestic abuse. The council received gold accreditation following a thorough assessment against the standards for responding to domestic abuse situations. Since August twenty twenty three, the council has undertaken a significant programme of work to improve how it recognises and responds to domestic abuse. This work has included embedding a trauma-informed, victim-centred approach to domestic abuse situations throughout council policies and procedures and spearheading a local partnership of organisations to ensure a comprehensive and cohesive level of support for those experiencing domestic abuse. Staff training has also been key with organisation-wide training taking place to help officers respond to domestic abuse situations. In addition, the council has created a network of domestic abuse champions within the organisation, individuals who are well-equipped to offer support. And again, I'd like to ask the Chief Executive on behalf of us all to thank her team for such a fantastic achievement and all the hard work that went into it. My third announcement relates to local government reorganisation. Although we've held member and parish briefings, I haven't given a formal update to council since our March meeting and quite a lot has changed since then. The first thing to briefly put on the record was the feedback that we had from the Ministry of Housing, Communities and Local Government on the interim proposal we submitted in March. That made it clear that despite our request for a small delay, the September twenty sixth twenty twenty five deadline remains in place. There was an important new clarification, which is that each authority, each of the fifteen authorities in Hampshire and Solent, can submit one option and only one option and that that solution has to provide a solution for the entire area. So we've seen in other parts of the country how people might make a solution that only responds to a little bit of an area and they've effectively, the government has ignored those. There was a common request that we treat the Isle of Wight as an exceptional circumstance in terms of how we think about local government reorganisation as we requested and the government has recognised that although asked us to ensure that we make strong enough case for it. And the process for boundary changes, there were two things that related to boundary changes of existing council areas. The first is that the change process itself has been simplified but the second is they've reinforced the need for strong justification before any changes are made. All fifteen councils in Hampshire and Solent were working together on the first phase of the work but have now split into two groups. Most councils, including Winchester, are working together on a five-council model. So that is the Isle of Wight plus four mainland authorities. There are currently three options being evaluated by this group, including via the survey and the engagement work that we launched last week. I won't go into the full details of all the councils proposed but from our perspective, the three options which we might form part of are as follows. The first is Winchester being part of a central authority with Test Valley and East Hampshire and obviously any county services that fit within that area. And as things stand with the information we have currently, that remains our preferred option. Winchester being part, the second option is Winchester being part of a larger authority with Test Valley, East Hampshire and the New Forest. And then a third version with boundary changes where parishes on the eastern waterside edge of the New Forest area and southern parishes in East Hampshire, Winchester and Test Valley could also transfer to neighbouring authorities. As far as boundary changes are concerned, we need to see, as it says, like the government, we want to see strong justification before supporting any boundary changes. And also, we do not support any parishes or being moved unless that is supported by those local communities. And we have indeed been repeatedly reassured that the decision on boundary changes affecting Winchester one from the county and three from the other thirteen councils. So the county's proposal is that Winchester District be merged with Basingstoke and Dean, Hart, Rushmore and East Hampshire. And obviously those parts of Hampshire's operations within that area. That gives a combined population of six hundred and fifty-five thousand people, which would make it the third biggest council in the country. At least it would be the third biggest council in the country if they weren't also proposing a new South West Hampshire authority combining Southampton, Eastleigh, New Forest and Test Valley with a population of seven hundred and six thousand, which would be even bigger. So the only councils, the only unitary councils in current existence at the moment that would be bigger than those two councils are Leeds and Birmingham. So while we received the county proposal a few hours ago and haven't had a chance to digest every last part of it, we had obviously seen what options they were looking at. And based on my reading so far, I don't think this proposal is one that we could support. While merging county and district councils is a chance to improve services, for example, by better coordination between housing and social care or between planning and highways, it won't do this if the new councils are too big, too remote and fail to deliver locally. Our goal is better, more joined-up services and with a scale of council that can respond to local needs. That's why Winchester, in Winchester, we decided to work with most councils in Hampshire and Solent in backing four mainland authorities. Anything fewer and at least one of the councils, or in this case, two of the councils, will be too big. It's also why, unlike the county, we're surveying residents to make sure any proposals reflect their needs and views. We're asking residents for their views first and then deciding what we're going to propose. For their own reasons, the county has decided to do it the other way around. Now that we've seen the county proposals, they have confirmed our worst fears. The county proposals are inevitably going to be so enormous, so remote and so bureaucratic that they can't deliver locally. Importantly also, they are also too large and unwieldy to deliver the kind of change and transformation needed to sort out the catastrophic mess of county finances. And ultimately, if reorganisation doesn't deliver better services and doesn't deliver better results for local people, there's no point in doing it, and we shouldn't be going ahead with it. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Chief Executive, do you have any announcements?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, members. I just have apologies this evening from councillors Batho, Bolton, Cunningham, Eve, Miller and Wallace. And just while I have the floor, leader, thank you for the kind words of appreciation for our council teams who work tirelessly every day, listening and learning from our residents to deliver great services, particularly in climate change and tackling domestic abuse, which we have heard this evening. It's my pleasure to pass those words of thanks on.
Thank you. The next agenda item is item four, questions from the members of the public. We have no questions before us this evening. Members, the next item of business this evening is agenda item five, twinning agreement, Neshen, Ukraine. Please can I welcome to our meeting representatives and volunteers from the Winchester Ukrainian Cultural Association, who are sat in the public gallery and also in their chair, Yulia Dubovik. We also have the Kalyana Coir with us. Mr. John, would you please introduce the report? Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Agenda item five is a report which sets out proposals for a twinning agreement with Neshen in Ukraine. The report's recommendations are set out on your agenda and also on page thirty-four of your agenda pack. Report CL one seven five refers, and this is included in your agenda pack on pages thirty-three to thirty-four. In summary, the report's recommendations are for council to endorse the proposed twinning agreement at the appendix to the report and that the mayor sign it accordingly. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. John. Please can I have a proposal for the recommendation before us? Councillor Tippett Cooper. Do I have a second or? Thank you, councillor. Do you wish to reserve your right to speak?
Yes, please.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, members and members in the public gallery, including many members of our Winchester Ukrainian Cultural Association, it's absolutely fantastic to have you here tonight behind me, and Yulia as well, who will also be speaking. So this evening, I have the absolute privilege of bringing forward a proposal that I believe captures the spirit of Winchester at its finest, open-hearted, forward-looking and proud to be part of something bigger than ourselves. The item before you is the formal twinning of the city of Winchester with the city of Neshen in Ukraine. Now, this proposal is the next chapter in a story that began right here in our community when families from Ukraine began arriving in Winchester following Russia's full-scale invasion in twenty twenty-two. And they were tired, traumatised and in need of sanctuary. Now, our district responded not with hesitation, but with humanity. Local residents opened their homes, our schools opened their classrooms, faith groups, neighbourhoods and council services came together to provide support. Indeed, we can never thank them enough, but the hundreds of hosts in the district opening their homes under the Homes for Ukraine scheme showed the very, very best of our district. And our council officers, I praise them again, Chief Executive, particularly those involved in the Ukraine resettlement scheme, worked tirelessly and brilliantly to ensure that our district has been able to support people from Ukraine and beyond and their families. Now, this proposal goes hand in hand with Winchester's journey to becoming a city of sanctuary, a district that recognises that when we can and should help those forced to leave their homes due to war and persecution, a district that recognises that when someone runs for their life, the only right response is to open our arms, a district that recognises that when hateful voices rise, we must not echo them in fear, but answer with the quiet irresistible strength of truth, kindness and decency. And from that kindness, that compassion that we've shown in our community, something lasting and beautiful has grown, and that is the Winchester Ukrainian Cultural Association, that represent our wonderful Ukrainian community in our district. They have become a cherished part of our cultural and civic life. And I know from looking around the room tonight that probably everybody here, members in particular, I know many of them have, have had enriching, the enriching experience of seeing WUCA, the Winchester Ukrainian Cultural Association, perform. And they've really shown the rich and beautiful culture of Ukraine and shared it with us here in Winchester. But WUCA and the Ukrainian community, you are not guests in Winchester District anymore, you are Winchestonians. You are our friends, our colleagues, our classmates and our neighbours. My little boys, the grandsons of people who fled persecution in Iraq, are now friends of amazing young children from Ukraine. Indeed, when our children, either born here or born in Ukraine, share stories, games and laughter, they remind us that peace begins in moments of connection. So this twinning is a promise that even in a world torn by conflict, friendship can and must light the way forward. Now, our Ukrainian community has shared their music, their tradition, their food, their energy and their courage with us. And they've taught us what resilience really looks like and what community really means. And this twinning proposal is not an abstract leap, it is a natural evolution of our journey and deepening of ties we have built with Ukraine. And I'm extremely grateful to the Neshen City Council, who we've been working with over the last year or so to reach this agreement. They are kind, positive, ambitious people who is excited about this as we are. They've kindly brought to us back in May when they visited, a mace, a ceremonial mace to join our many Winchester maces. So we now are building quite an armoury in Winchester, an international one, no less. Neshen, let me tell you a little bit about Neshen. It's a city of around seventy-two thousand people, north-east of Kyiv, with a rich cultural and academic history, including one of Ukraine's oldest universities. Its history dates back to eleven forty-seven, so our shared ancient roots to cities, an obvious connection. And it's a status as a hub of education, as does Winchester. It has rich heritage and cultural institutions, as do we, has thirty-eight libraries, more than a dozen museums, stunning architecture within its church buildings in particular. I'm sure you'll agree, all features that resonate with our assets here in Winchester. And it also has pickles, it's internationally famous for pickles. So I think in Winchester, we may need to have to reopen our famous burping Ron bar again to get the burgers to go with the pickles so that we can form that connection too. Now, twinning our cities will be a symbolic act, yes, but it is also a practical one. It will allow us to foster exchanges between schools and artists, civic leaders and volunteers. It helps our young people connect by remote learning, for example, together. It will give us the chance to learn from each other, whether it's about heritage, sustainability, democracy or how communities can come together under pressure. Indeed, Mayor Codola, the mayor of Neshen, who visited us in May, his delegation commented how Neshens deeply admired Winchester's voluntary sector and they're excited to learn from our charities about how they could address certain challenges in their city. So as set out in the paper before you tonight, there is no cost to the council of this twinning agreement and there's no formal obligations, there are only opportunities. And indeed, it builds on a proud tradition of twinning. Winchester District has been twinned with Gisela in Germany for decades and has longstanding links with Lyon in France and indeed with Winchester in Virginia, in the United States of America. So I found out during this paper. Now, each of these relationships would have brought us new ideas, friendships and shared experiences over the years. And this twinning with Neshen will do the same, but with an added sense of urgency and purpose given the circumstances of war and displacement that still shape daily life in Ukraine and in Neshen. So this agreement itself is both moving and practical. It commits us to building connections between our citizens, sharing knowledge on sustainable development and urban governance, promoting cultural understanding and standing together in defence of democracy and human rights. And it's written in both English and Ukrainian, a sign of mutual respect and parity between our cities. So members, in a world where war rages and democracies may be faltering and so much seems to divide us, this agreement is a quiet but clear statement that we believe in the power of civic friendship, that cities can be bridges, that communities, not just governments, can uphold the values of peace, dignity and international solidarity. It's a small step, but it is a meaningful one. And it is only possible because what has already happened here, because of the open-hearted response of our residents, our members and our council, and because of the incredible leadership and warmth of the Ukrainian community that are now rooted in our city. So I ask you to support this paper wholeheartedly, not simply to sign a document, but to affirm what kind of city we are. So in linking Winchester with Neshen, we're not just strengthening international ties, we're recognising the humanity we share and the future we can shape together. And now I'm very, very pleased to introduce a message from Mayor Codola himself, which we'll bring up on the screens.
Dear friends and partners, today we mark a meaningful milestone, the official signing of the twinning agreement between Neshen and Winchester, a city with deep history and strong spirit. This partnership is more than a formal agreement, it is a bridge between our communities, opening doors to cultural exchange, educational growth and mutual support in these challenging times. I want to especially thank the Ukrainian community in Winchester, many of them proud daughters of Neshen. Their dedication and love for their homeland led to the founding of the Winchester Ukrainian Cultural Association, the spark that made this twinning possible. I was also fortunate to visit Winchester in person, where I had the privilege of meeting both the former and current mayors. Our conversations focused on the shared values, common challenges and inspiring opportunities for the cooperation. This twinning is more than a symbol of friendship, it is a meaningful step forward. It unites our efforts to support the people of Ukraine and to foster the growth and resilience of both our communities. I'm confident that this partnership will flourish into a lasting, impactful and upflying alliance. Glory to Ukraine!
Thank you. Thank you, councillor Tippett Cooper and Mayor Codola. So he can't be here, but I'm sure we'll pass on the thanks to him. Any questions, members? Councillor Rasset Cooper.
I noticed that the twinning is limited to the town wards. I would say that there's quite a lot of places in the district that would also like to be involved. We have a number of Ukrainians actually living in Alsford, in my ward, and I'm sure that's true of lots of other places.
Councillor Tippett Cooper.
Thank you very much, councillor Gordon Smith. I think absolutely the spirit and intent behind this agreement is certainly to include, I mean, I think the emphasis of my speech was very much on the district's contribution and the district's involvement in this. And I think that's a very good point and will ensure that all parts of the district be involved.
Councillor Horrell, please.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. I welcome the opportunity to forge a relationship with the Ukrainian community, given the closeness of the relationship in the Winchester District and what we've been able to do together over the last many years. As councillor Tippett Cooper knows, I was a host for a Ukrainian person and that was a huge satisfaction to be able to help them in their time of need. I like though councillor Gordon Smith questioned in the paper the fact that this was a town initiative, when indeed the district has been very welcoming in the broader sense to many Ukrainian guests and continue to have strong groups in those various communities. So I hope that we'll be able to amend this in some way to ensure that the district is part of this initiative and not just the city-town wards. Thank you.
Councillor Tippett Cooper.
Yes, thank you, councillor Horrell. I think certainly that is the actual formal agreement itself, certainly that is the intent, and I'm sure we can come up with something.
Councillor Lee.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was recently reading a version of the Manifesto for Humanity and the principles which reminded me that solidarity, compassion and universal human dignity must arise above tribal divisions and unjust aggression. Yet too often, fear and self-interest undermine these ideals. As a council, we have demonstrated our humanitarian values through our sanctuary city status and our friendship and support for Ukrainians who live amongst us. And it's good to see us now extending these values and the humanitarian principles further with this proposed twinning agreement with Neshen in Ukraine. We all hope for a swift end to the war in Ukraine and for peace and decency to prevail, including wherever conflict exists. And similar to previous speakers, I hope that this agreement can be extended to be clearly a district agreement and not just the town wards. And I'm inclined to obviously fully support this twinning agreement and look forward to working well. Thank you.
Yes, indeed. Thank you, councillor Lee. And I think one of the points to emphasise is that obviously with local government reorganisation, I think the nexus between, I see there's a conversation upfront about probably, exactly that point. I think the reality is, is that the existence of the city of Winchester as local authority will need to be maintained, obviously. And so that the successor organisation for this particular agreement is most likely to be the city board boundaries. However, the reality is, the practical reality and the cultural reality is, is that this agreement will involve all of the district, as it has, as the efforts and the Ukrainian community have involved all of Ukraine. I've got Councillor Todd waving his hand, who might be able to help me on this one.
Mr Mayor, can I make a suggested amendment, which I think will actually mean that we do something that reflects the views of people in the room, but also protects the twinning into the future irrespective of what happens to the world of local government reorganization. The city of Winchester, irrespective of the history of the, of local government, has varied, has shrunk and grown over its time. It's now currently at its biggest extent and covers the entire district. But I think if we make the twinning between the city of Winchester and Nizhnye Town Council and slightly fudge the words town wards, we have something that I think will work for as long as this council exists and will continue to work after that point. So I would propose a drafting amendment to remove the words, brackets, town wards, close brackets. And if somebody wants to second that, it would be much appreciated.
Mr Mayor, I'd be happy to second that suggestion. Thank you.
We did a debate on this amendment. I think the suggestion by Councillor Todd is agreeable, I think across the chamber, and I think we should go ahead with that amendment. There are two other members who asked the question, so I will continue with those questions for the time being. Councillor Chamberlain, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I welcome the proposals and agree across our district, we have a strong history of welcoming Ukrainian guests into our homes over recent years. And in fact, in my time as a councillor, I think this is probably a new record for attendance in the public gallery this evening, which no doubt is in no small part to the proposals that are in front of us this evening, which we should also note. Can I ask, subject to the outcome of tonight's meeting, are there any plans for the city council to formally recognize the twinning agreement at an event that both Ukrainian sponsors, past or present, and guests can attend?
Councillor Tippett Cooper.
Thank you, Councillor Chamberlain. You raised a very good point. I think that's a very good idea and something that we will have a discussion with WUCA about and see if we can come up with an appropriate event to do so. And also just to say thank you everyone for that sort of very, very dignified amendment. And I think that reflects the support and tone of this paper. So I'm really grateful, particularly Councillor Horrell.
Thank you, Councillor. Councillor Bailey Morgan, please.
I'm in full support of this excellent proposal to twin Winchester with the Ukrainian city of Nizhnye alongside the council's continued commitment to the city of sanctuary movement. I'm sure this proposal will be appreciated by many in our community, not least members of the Winchester Ukrainian Cultural Association and other Ukrainians now living here. From listening to Councillor Tippett Cooper's online presentation and what he has said here today, I am convinced that this will be a fruitful partnership and I welcome the cultural, educational and business exchanges that will play a key role in its success. I realize this proposal is in part to help further develop relations with our Ukrainian community, but I also see it as an act of solidarity with a country that has faced a brutal military invasion by Russia. With this in mind, I do feel compelled to also speak briefly of the catastrophic situation in another part of the world. While conflicts in places like Sudan and Yemen also warrant our attention, the situation in Gaza stands apart because of the scale of brutality against women and children and our government's complicity. Staggeringly, out of at least 55,000 Palestinians now killed by Israeli forces, over 17,000 are children, with over 5,400 of those under the age of six.
Councillor Bailey Cooper, let me interrupt you. We are talking about questions. It's not a debate at the moment, so can we ask the questions, please? Let's keep it that. We move on to the debate in a minute.
Forgive my ignorance. Can I come back and continue? I mean, I do have a question, but it's at the end of what I was saying, so it wouldn't be, it would be out of place at this moment. Okay, thank you.
If there are no questions, we've already started on the debate. I guess Councillor Bailey Cooper Morgan has already started that.
No problem, thank you. Obviously, I will not start from the beginning. I was, as I was saying, I will start at the beginning of the short section I was saying. So staggeringly out of at least 55,000 Palestinians now killed by Israeli forces, over 17,000 are children, with over 5,400 of those under the age of six. A further 1.9 million, that's 90% of Gaza's population, has been displaced, and organizations like Amnesty International have called Israel's actions genocide. Due to the level of suffering being witnessed, Britain's historical role in the conflict and our government continuing to enable arms sales to Israel, many of our residents feel a strong moral duty to show solidarity with Palestine and are doing so with a weekly peace vigil for Palestine on Saturday afternoons at the Buttercross Monument. Therefore, in the spirit of today's proposal, I would welcome the opportunity to explore future acts of solidarity between Winchester City Council and Palestinians facing unimaginable suffering, as other councils have done elsewhere.
Thank you, Bailey Morgan. Anybody else who want to debate? Councillor Brophy.
Hello, thank you, Mr Mayor. And thank you, Councillor Tippett Cooper, for a very moving speech, actually. I think it sums up more eloquently anything that I could add to it. But I did want to draw attention to the fact that this is the formal twinning, and I think that was the word used in almost your first sentence. And I think it's important to note this is a formal process because we are already intertwined and twinned with our friends and cousins in Ukraine. I myself have had the pleasure of working with one of our guests from Ukraine, as have several of us, on the Lib Dem campaign. And they are our friends and neighbors. They're the people who make our faces light up when we see them in the high street. They, like many other migrants and guests to our country over generations, are already our neighbors. It's an honor to share in their lives and in their achievements. We've also shared in a heartbreak too. We've seen it firsthand, not only in the news, but also in the touching vigils at Abbey Gardens lit by candlelight, which I think many of us have attended and been grateful to see and be part of. I think we're all very much richer for this exchange, so definitely welcome the motion. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Brophy. Councillor Russell Gordon Smith, please.
Yes, I feel very strongly about this twinning and I'm very pleased it's happening. I think we need to recognize that there's actually, we are involved in this conflict in Russia, whether we like it or not. Not far away from here in Salisbury, a person was killed and a lot of other people might have been killed. And we recently had an arson attempt which came to light. So we are under constant attack. And of course, the whole purpose of Putin's invasion was to pull Ukraine back into the Russian sphere, when clearly they want to have the choice and they made the choice to be part of Western Europe. And I feel that this is, you know, this is an opportunity to strike a blow, if you like, in that war for democracy and freedom. And so I really welcome this.
Thank you, Russell Gordon Smith. Councillor Bennett.
Good, it's working. Thank you, thank you, Mr Mayor. And thank you to the members of WACO who have come along tonight. I know it's a bit warm in here. And thank you for everything that you've contributed for getting us to this step. In response to Councillor Bailey Morgan's question, yes, I'm more than happy to meet with you to discuss. And I think we've got a meeting tomorrow, so we can talk about it then. Councillor Brophy, absolutely echo your words. This is just a formal step. Our bonds with Ukraine have already been forged. Twinning Winchester with Nizhnye is more than just a symbolic act. It's a meaningful step towards deepening international friendship, cultural exchange and understanding. Nizhnye, as Councillor Tippett Cooper outlined, is a historic Ukrainian city with a rich academic and artistic heritage, reflecting many of Winchester's own attributes. This partnership would open doors for educational collaboration, cultural enrichment and economic opportunity. But the formalization of our relationship goes much further than that. It builds on the strong relationships we've already formed with the Ukrainians living here in Winchester, friends and neighbors who have already become part of our community and enriched our shared life. Twinning is a way to honor those bonds and to extend our support to their homeland. Sorry. Unsurprisingly, this is slightly emotional. This has been a long time coming and has been a lot of work for us. So we do, we extend our support to your homeland now in its time of need. Sorry. And as we look to its peaceful future. Together, we create a lasting connection that celebrates diversity, promotes peace and strengthens unity across borders.
Thank you, Councillor Baker.
Please support the paper.
I assume this is your response, since you reserve right to speak. Councillor Tippett Cooper, do you wish to sum up? First of all, so the amendment, we had all adopted it. Councillor Horrell, would you like to speak as you reserve the right to speak?
Mr Mayor, I don't think that's necessary. I think the mood of the room is very much in favor of what we proposed and I think we should move to confirm. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councillor Horrell. Do I now request Councillor Tippett Cooper to sum up? Please. No, Councillor Todd doesn't want to go any further on this, so I'll request Councillor Tippett Cooper to sum up, please. Okay. Bear with me, members. So it's now the question of whether the amendment is adopted or not for voting. So I'm asking you to vote for the amendment. Those who are in favor, please raise their hand. Thank you. So the amendment is accepted. We'll now request Tippett Cooper finally to sum up, please.
Thank you very much, Mr Mayor. And once again, Councillor Horrell, Councillor Lee, Councillor Russell Cook, thank you very much for making that sort of proposal because actually it just broadens things and it makes the spirit of the paper and the agreement true to what was intended. And the incredible work of residents and councillors and the council across the district over the last few years supporting people from Ukraine has been absolutely unbelievable. So I'm really pleased that that amendment is being made. Thank you, everybody, for your support of this historic agreement. Thank you mostly to the Winchester-Ukraine Cultural Association, who have been one of the driving forces behind having this twinning agreement happen and who in many respects are going to be sort of fundamental to maintaining it and keeping it going along with all of our civic organizations and our councillors and ourselves. So it is a huge privilege and pleasure to bring this paper and it's been really a lovely endorsement of democracy, I dare say, tonight, to see this happen, even with the sort of procedural quirks, which, you know, they're important. And it's important we have them because those procedural quirks done in this forum are the way in which we should be running societies and not through any other means which other regimes tend to adopt. So thank you very much, everybody, once again. I look forward to having your votes on this and very, very excited about this twinning agreement's continuing along into the future.
Thank you, Councillor Tippett Cooper. So, thank you, members. Are the recommendations in Report CL175 as set out on the agenda agreed with the amendment? Is that the right wording?
Yeah.
Agreed. I'm sure I will learn in a minute. Members, thank you. In celebration of our new twinning agreement, I would like now to firstly invite Yulia to say a few words on behalf of our Ukrainian community and then following this, there will be a short performance.
So, dear mayors, members of city council and Winchester resident, I heard so many great words today. Basically, it's the biggest part of my speech already have been told. So I'm really, really, it's a great honor for me to stand here today and speak on behalf of the Ukrainian community of Winchester. Today is really a historical day as we approved the twinning agreement between Winchester and the city of Nizhnye in Chernygyev region. This is a moment filled with a deep meaning and hope for us. First of all, allow me to express our sincere gratitude to entire Winchester community. When Russia full-scale invasion forced millions of Ukrainians to leave their homes, you opened your hearts and your doors. You provide us with refuge, safety and warmth when we needed it most. Your hospitality and humanity became a light for us in the darkest of time and we will never forget it. We are grateful for every act of support and the Ukrainian community strives to show our appreciation by actively participating in the cultural life of the city. When we began to looking for a twin city for Winchester in Ukraine, our choice fell upon Nizhnye. We were guided by several key criteria, a similar population size for equitable exchange and especially a rich cultural and historical heritage. Nizhnye, just like Winchester, is an ancient city with over a thousand years of history. Its streets breathe the past and its residents are proud of their deep roots, which makes this connection truly special. Today's twinning agreement is not just a formality. Nizhnye has suffered greatly from Russian aggressions in the first days of the full-scale invasion, was surrounded for months, but yet stood strong and was never captured. For Nizhnye, this agreement is a powerful symbol of solidarity, friendship and faith in the victory of light over darkness. It's a bridge we are building between our nations. We believe that this twinning will pave the way for students' exchange, joint cultural project and we will foster economic cooperation, which will mutually benefit for both cities. On behalf of Ukrainians in Winchester, I want to express our deep belief that this twinning will blossom into a strong and lasting friendship. We are ready to put in every effort to ensure that this agreement become not just lines on a paper, but a living, active cooperation that will inspire future generation. Thank you for your support. Thank you for your faith in Ukraine and for being friends to us. And now, I would like to invite a special performers. Please, welcome the Kalina Choir, who will perform Rushnik, the embroidered towel. This song holds profound symbolism for Ukrainians, representative and unbreakable connection to the homeland and to the generation of ascents. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you very much to our colleagues from the Winchester Ukrainian Cultural Association and Kalina, is that how you pronounce it, for that wonderful performance. To reiterate, I am absolutely delighted to sign this agreement on behalf of the residents of our district and the council. We all very much look forward to embellishing our new ties with the resident of Nishin. You are, of course, very welcome to stay for the remainder of the meeting, and you are invited to be seated in the public gallery. An officer will assist you. Members, the next item of business this evening is Agenda Item Six, Consideration and Determination of the Recommended Minutes of the Second of the Scrutiny Committee, held on 5th of June 2025. Mr John, would you please introduce?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Agenda Item Six is the recommended minute of the scrutiny committee, held on the 5th of June 2025, and this is set out on your agenda and on page 45 of your agenda pack. Report SC 98 refers, and this is also included in your agenda pack on pages 47 to 64. The report's recommendation is for council to note the annual scrutiny report 2024-2025. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr John. Councillor Brook, would you move the recommended minute of the scrutiny committee, please?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. During the last municipal year, we've covered a lot of topics in the overarching scrutiny committee, including purchase of waste recycling vehicles, budget papers, acquisition of affordable homes, and the quarterly finance and performance monitoring papers. The policy committee have fed into various policies, including District Nature Improvement Plan and the council plan. We started 2024 with training from the centre of local government to identify better ways of working with regard to scrutiny and how to prioritise workloads better. Following last year's busy scrutiny agendas versus the policy committees, the chairs of all three committees of scrutiny are working together regarding prioritisation and workload and best use of task and finish groups. Our annual community partnership review with Chief Inspector Corrin Bishop was a real highlight from the year and demonstrated continued focus on crime and antisocial behaviour within the whole district. There were many meetings of scrutiny at which cabinet members were trying to answer questions on behalf of others who'd not attended. Throughout the year, the municipal year, the attendance of cabinet members significantly decreased. I would like to put in a plea to all cabinet members, where possible, to attend the scrutiny meetings and prioritise this in your diaries, because it's really helpful for effective scrutiny if the right people are there to answer the questions. I would like to thank officers, and in particular, Mr Matthew Watson, for the time and support given throughout the year towards the scrutiny meetings, and I commend this annual scrutiny report to the council for noting.
Thank you, councillor Brook. Do I have a second there? Thank you, councillor Horrell.
Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Do you wish to reserve your right to speak?
Yes, Mr Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, councillor Horrell. Councillor Brook, would you introduce?
Questions.
Is there a question? You had already introduced him. Any questions? I see no questions. Stage is debate. No debate either. So... Councillor Horrell, would you like to... You have reserved the right to speak, so would you want to do that now?
Mr Mayor, thank you, and I'm very happy to second this report and recommend it to council. Scrutiny, as we know, is a fundamental element of good governance and the sign of a good council, and historically, that has been one of the elements that we have all held on to and supported. And also, we know that the splitting of the scrutiny function with the new policy committees has helped to have a very good discussion as policies and new ideas are developed and moved into formal council business. Also, scrutiny is an excellent way of ensuring that the administration is held to account and that we can all align behind our council priorities. So, Mr Mayor, I'd be very happy to support the recommendation before you today and ask that all councillors support the report. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Horrell. Councillor Brook, do you wish to sum up?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I don't think there's anything else to say.
Thank you. Is the recommended minute the scrutiny committee as set out on the agenda and in the recommended minutes agreed? Show of hands. Thank you. Thank you. The recommended minutes of the scrutiny committee as set out on the agenda and the recommended minute is agreed. Officers will now load the necessary... Oh, forget it. Members, the next item of business this evening is Agenda Item Seven, Changes to Committee Membership. Mr John?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I've not been notified of any changes to committees. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr John. Agenda Item Eight is the questions from the members of the council. Members who have submitted questions will be invited, in turn, to either read out their question or refer to this as set out, which will be in the order that they are published on the council's website. A reminder also that our procedure is that only the questioner can ask one supplementary question and should indicate accordingly. Members are reminded that our procedure rules allows that the total time occupied by questions and answers and the supplementary shall not exceed 40 minutes. Members, in turn, I will invite you to ask your question, and the cabinet member will respond. Can I ask that any supplementary question is succinct and to the point? And as a reminder, written answer will be published to the questions submitted on the website. So we start with question number one. Councillor Warwick?
Yes, thank you very much, Mr Mayor, and thank you to the portfolio holder for your anticipated response to my question. My question is, how many vehicles are licensed under the Winchester City Council taxi, that is the Hackney Carriage and private hire scheme, and how many of these are ultra-low emission vehicles? Thank you.
Councillor Grammerson?
Hi. Well, thank you for your thanks before I've even given the answer. It's very kind of you. So first, I mean, I apologise to anyone here who is an expert on the technical details of ULEV, but I thought I should at least say what ULEV actually means. The Vehicle Certification Agency currently defines ULEV, that's ultra-low EVs, as any vehicle that emits less than 75 grams of CO2 per kilometre from the tailpipe. ULEV is not a metric that regulation requires that the council tracks, nor have we tracked it for local policy reasons. However, what we do track for local policy reasons are battery EVs, of which, of course, are ultra-low electric vehicles, and we also track hybrid vehicles, some of which might be ULEV and some of which might be just above the ULEV level. The remainder of any vehicles that are registered that aren't in one of those categories are, of course, now the lower emission Euro six petrol and diesel vehicles. So to answer the specific question, currently, we have 236 cars licensed, sorry, cars licensed vehicles, of which 83 are Hackney Carriages and 153 are private hire. Of the total, 82, or roughly 35%, are hybrid or battery electric, and the remaining 154, which is about 65%, are the lower emission Euro six petrol or diesel. I hope that answers your question.
Councillor Warwick, do you have a supplementary?
Yes, if I may, thank you, Mr Mayor, and thank you for that response. And I just wondered what your policy or proposals might be then to encourage more lower emission vehicles, including, most importantly, having followed to old diesel cars, which were badged with the Winchester City logo two weeks ago, to replace those older diesel cars that obviously increase the particulate matter and reduce the air quality across our district. Thank you.
Councillor Grammerson?
So I think what we need to understand is the levers that, as a council, we have. We have, of course, got national levers which are working towards the whole population. But within the taxi licensing policy, there are very few levers. The levers we currently use and have done for some time are the levers of the, specifically, the age of the vehicles that can be registered to run and be licensed by Winchester City Council. And if I just check my notes here, our licensing policy allows the electric and hybrid vehicles to be registered at, excuse me, at an age which is three years older than petrol and diesel cars. So that creates a financial incentive for the taxi drivers to consider electric or, for that matter, hybrid. They can also run their vehicles for three years longer, so the age at which they're no longer allowed to be licensed with that vehicle is, I think, 15 years with a hybrid or electric, whereas for petrol and diesel, it is 12 years. So in effect, what that policy allows to happen is that the vehicles are further through the depreciation curve, which means that there is a better economic case for the drivers to choose a battery electric or a hybrid vehicle. Now, of course, we've got to understand that while the battery vehicles are coming through really fast at the top end of the market, so people who buy new cars, a lot of them are considering battery electric, typically taxi drivers buy second-hand cars, and they typically are in the range of about five to six years old. So it's very likely that the taxi population of vehicles will somewhat lag the general population of vehicles, so it shouldn't be a surprise if the ratios are slightly lower than the whole population of vehicles. I hope that helps to answer the supplementary. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Grammerson. Councillor Murphy, please.
Okay, thank you, Mr Mayor. This year, we're celebrating 250 years since the birth of Jane Austen and have experienced increased numbers of visitors in our city and district. While anyone living here will be aware of the tourists being attracted to our district, both from within the UK and from abroad, the size of the contribution to our communities is much less visible. Can the cabinet member tell us how tourism contributes to the local economy and the role it is playing across our district?
Councillor Thompson, please.
Thank you very much, Mr Mayor, and thank you, councillor Murphy, for your question. I agree, we are experiencing large numbers of visitors across our district in celebration of the 250th anniversary of Jane Austen. We are now just a little over halfway through the year, but even so, we have a number of exciting events to look forward to. A Regency Ball at the Great Hall, a Regency Fashion Show, and the unveiling of a new statue in the Cathedral Close are just some of the events coming up, and there are many more. Across the district, we have been achieving phenomenal results for visitor numbers and spend, and I think we sometimes forget that tourism plays such a major part in the economic success of our district. A whopping eight million people visit our district every year, spending over £370 million in our local areas. And those visitors are supporting over 5,760 jobs, many of whom are local residents and certainly those living nearby. Our tourism sector is the second-largest employer in the district, over and above health care and, obviously, the local councils, making it one of Winchester's largest and most valuable industries. Our tourism product ranges from our heritage city, beautiful rural attractions, themed trails and walks, outdoor activities to enjoy in unspoilt countryside, high-quality local food and drink, and a diverse range of accommodation, and, not forgetting, a thriving arts and cultural scene across the district. Building on this and working with our partners at the county council, Portsmouth and Southampton City Councils, we have just gained local visitor economic partnership accreditation from Visit England. And this will be a really great opportunity to grow the district's visitor economy, a tr- attract new investment, create jobs and really showcase the rich experiences that our area has to offer.
Thank you councillor Thompson. Murphy, do you have supplementary?
Yes, just to, to encourage an expansion on a bit of that answer then. So just if you could cover the, you know, what is the strategy for growing the tourist industry by number of visitors or by increasing the spend in our communities per visitor? And within then, that, then what immediate steps are you taking to respond to the growth, to improve the experience of tourists and our residents?
councillor Thompson.
Yes, thank you very much and thank you for the supplementary. Yes, we, we obviously do want to improve our visitor numbers and we want to build on, on the numbers that I, those whopping eight million visitors a year. And we're going to do that by working on a new sustainable tourism strategy and the work on that has actually started. Today, we held our first stakeholder workshop and we have another one tomorrow. And we will be presenting the findings of those, of those workshops to the Economic and Housing Policy Committee later in the year. And of course, more visitors mean busier high streets, more use of our services such as toilets and car parks. And is certainly one of the reasons why we've just seen a major refurbishment of our public toilets, particularly in the centre of town in Market Lane and Abbey Gardens, Cheshwell Street multi-story, car park and the Park and Ride, as well as a programme to upgrade those in our district. Improving these facilities is not only important for our local economy, but, and also in our city and our market towns, so that we present the best possible, what do you call it, best possible view for the tourists and for our residents as well. So they go away with thoughts of hopefully returning. We're also aware that we do need to improve signage, particularly in the city at peak times, especially during the very business Christmas period. And unbelievably, people do still ask for directions to the cathedral's Christmas market. In addition, to improve again that visitor experience and also for our residents when the town in particular gets extremely busy, we do work alongside our partners in the Winchester bid and with the cathedral in particular to ensure that we, we have plans in place. But I just want to really reiterate that tourism plays such an important role in our district and it accounts for seven percent of all the employment in our district. The sector drives further economic benefits through the supply chain with seventy-eight million pounds spent on suppliers and income generation. And obviously, the more visitors we do attract into our district, the more investment that we are then able to, to garner from that. Thank you very much.
Thank you councillor Thompson. Question three, councillor Horrel, please.
Mr Mayor, thank you for allowing me to put my question to council this evening. On the sixteenth of April, I sent an email to the portfolio holder for the local plan, raising several questions about the Mitchell Dever New Town. This email was never answered. Can I therefore ask the portfolio holder to address the question I raised about the administration's position regarding the POPAM proposal in the Regulation eighteen Local Plan Consultation in Basingstoke and Dean? And for the benefit of councillors in the chamber, the specific question in the email read as follows: Are we objecting to the POPAM proposal in the Regulation eighteen consultation in Basingstoke when it opens? If so, can we, ward councillors, once again discuss WCC comments as we did on the initial submission? Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you councillor Horrel. councillor Porter, please.
Thank you very much, but I'm afraid that that question was a little premature at the time, but I am updating you here. Basingstoke and Dean hasn't started the Regulation eighteen consultation. And the local development scheme for Basingstoke and Dean agreed in February twenty twenty-five indicates this won't start before the autumn, possibly even winter twenty twenty-five. We were opposed to the inclusion of Popham Airfield during their previous Regulation eighteen consultation. And while, of course, we can't prejudge our response, because the proposal has been significantly changed, if they submit as they did on the previous proposal, we would expect to do so again. And I can tell you that today, our officers are actually at Basingstoke and Dean having a conversation about that very matter. In answer to the next part, to the part of your question about whether I'd be open to discussing any draft reply with ward members, of course I would. I'd be more than happy to do so and you know that we've talked many times since the sixteenth of April. But when we know the outcome of today, we'll be able to have that conversation.
Thank you councillor Porter. councillor Horrel, do you have a supplementary?
I do, please, Mr Mayor, and for those of us who know the area well and indeed the portfolio holder does too, the relevance of the POPAM proposal is that it is linked to the Mitchell Dever New Town proposal. And at a meeting of the Diva Society, their AGM, a member of the council at Basingstoke and Dean, in fact, the Liberal Democrat portfolio holder, failed to indicate that he would be objecting to the New Town proposal when it, if it came forward. Can I ask therefore, has the portfolio holder used her political connections to leverage any pressure on her colleague in Basingstoke and Dean? And if not, why not? Thank you.
Thank you councillor Horrel. councillor Porter, please.
Thank you. As I just said, we start with the officer conversation because that is where the tabling of that information comes from in the first place. I think the councillor made it very clear at the time that he had to also look at the response from his own constituents first and, and their own district. Until that, until this point, really, we haven't been at a point of knowing what that will say. The officers, our officers are looking at the duty to cooperate and also at the whole tabling of what they're asking for at this point in time. As you also know, Mitchell Dever New Town has not been announced in any way, shape or form, nor has any other new town at this point in time. So we're all at a bit of an impasse. But I can assure you that you as ward councillors will be kept fully in the picture with what we're expecting to do within your ward.
Thank you councillor Porter. Question four, councillor Leaming, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Whilst we're all pleased to see that the council is strengthening the enforcement team, enabling them to take actions as necessary, my residents are very concerned with cases whose resolutions have been long overdue. In one case in particular, this has been going on for twelve years. It concerns a building that was started without playing permission as it had lapsed. Since then, we have had three retrospective applications which were all refused. Three inspectors' reports, each of which were upheld the council's position, but no outcome has yet been achieved. Twelve months ago, we had a meeting with all the ward councillors, yourself and senior officer, where we asked the council to have a plan in place should the owner not comply with the inspector's report. This should have happened in November. Here we are, eight months later, and as yet, there's been no action to resolve the problem. Our residents need an outcome. They are left with a building which has been said that it is better suited to an airfield than a residential road. No fewer than three inspectors concur with that statement.
Thank you councillor Leaming. councillor Porter, please.
Thank you. And you will know that since you wrote that question, the appellant's decision has been made and the inspector made the decision in favour of the appellant. And I think that you and I share our deep disappointment at the inspector's decision. At every stage, in every enforcement case, we take legal advice and we're advised that actually there was nothing more we could do until we had the result of the inspector's decision. So to overturn the previous inspector's reports that this building was akin to something in an airfield is really distressing. It was especially disappointing to read that the inspector doesn't support removal of permitted development rights on this site or that the building should have a completion deadline. The only positive from the report is that conditions set will require the applicant to continue the dialogue with the city council on certain matters. We will be seeking advice as to whether we can challenge the inspector's report.
Thank you councillor Porter. councillor Leaming, do you have a supplementary?
Yes, thank you, Mr Mayor. Just by the results, the council seems to have this is unfair to our residents. We have a dedicated team of professionals working very hard on enforcement issues which do not result in any action being taken. We seem to encourage retrospective applications which go to appeal again, time and time again, costing time and money. Is it about time that this council has an independent inquiry into this to ensure that, that residents get the best possible service? As a member of the scrutiny committee, I will be asking in the next meeting whether we can look into this in great detail.
Thank you councillor Leaming. councillor Porter, please.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And this council has a commitment to learning and to finding out how we can get things better. And we, but we always take action as fast as we believe we're legally possible to do so and enforce what we're doing. Your comment that we don't use legislation enough is a question that we can look at other councils as well and see how they do it. But, and also we always check with our legal team and with KCs and appropriate, the appropriate source of information. I think that you've suggested that you would like to call that to scrutiny. I think it would be a useful thing to do. We, we as a council, as we've said already, within scrutiny, it's important that we challenge our own selves as a council. I think it would be a useful thing to do and to look at how other councils do things. Our team here feel very confident in what they're doing, but it's always useful to learn.
Thank you councillor Porter. councillor Lee, question five.
Mr Mayor. Thank you. Thank you for allowing me to ask, ask my question. As we've heard from the leader this evening, Winchester City Council is one of twelve councils working on proposals for new unitary authorities. Residents are now being asked for feedback through an online survey and drop-in sessions on the three options. However, the questions on priorities in the survey are limited and neither residents nor councillors have been shown the data that underpins three options. So can I ask, will the data that underpins the proposed options be made available to residents and councillors? Thank you.
Thank you councillor Lee. councillor Todd.
As councillor Lee, thank you, Mr Mayor. As councillor Lee knows, I sent him the full one hundred and twenty-nine page dataset used to decide on the options that we would undertake further research on on May the fourteenth, four forty-six PM, ahead of the council leader's option appraisal workshop on Monday, the May the nineteenth. This has been further supplemented by a further fifty-seven pages of data evaluating the split options in more detail, which was used for the meeting on Tuesday that I referenced earlier in the meeting. I do not intend to require that residents are asked to read all one hundred and eighty-six pages of material before completing the survey. This is a common survey for all areas. The research is already underway. The protocol for its use is agreed between all authorities and it is too late to require anyone responding to the survey to read so much information prior to making a response. It's not sensible, it's not practical, and given the extremely challenging deadlines set by government, there is no time to restart the process. It's also the case that any data shared would be partial and incomplete. The councils and KPMG continue to collect and analyse more data on a daily and weekly basis. Important questions continue to be worked on. Importantly also, the purpose of the questionnaire is not to seek residents' views on the data that led to the three options under consideration being chosen, but to understand their views on the wider issues of reorganisation and our proposals themselves. We are not asking the council, or sorry, the public to mark our homework. We're asking them what matters to them. This process is already too technocratic. The goal is to make it more human. I recognise that not every question that people might have about the process will be answered. That's why the research programme is, is supplemented by in-depth interviews to gain exactly this kind of insight. And importantly, what's in the survey is not the only criteria that the government's looking at, so that we're looking at, or that the government's asking us to look at. The survey is aiming to fill holes in our knowledge, not assess the, the knowledge and data that's been collected. And importantly, it is also not the only set of data that we're using to create and justify our proposal. Does that mean that the council won't be sharing a database case with the pervert option that we're proposing to submit at the end of this process? Of course we will. It will build on the earlier data and the results of this survey and this will also include analysis of the options we have chosen not to follow. Once all the cases have been submitted, the government will also run its own consultation on the different cases put forward by different councils in Hampshire, where the full argument for each option will be laid out and people will have a chance to respond. But there is no intention to share publicly every single working paper that has been used by chief executives and leaders to get us to this point. Some of them have been superseded. The analysis has gone beyond what was already there. The analysis would be incomplete since the data for East Hampshire and Hampshire would not automatically be included. It is too late for them to be shared consistently across the entire county to ensure that the dataset for any survey is consistent for every area and it would add complexity and time to a process that is already too complex and where there is no more time.
Thank you councillor Todd. councillor Lee, do you have a supplementary?
Yes, thank you, Mr Mayor. I acknowledge I did receive the, the variety of information and of course, I would not have distributed that because it would have been overwhelming. So I think my supplementary question would focus on the need for some significant meaningful amount of published and accessible data in a format that would allow those who want to get into the, the detail at some stage to be able to do that. Now, whether that is appropriate after the submission to the MHCALG or, or whenever, I just think it'd be useful to have transparency and have this, and some of it grounded in what I call the principle of small is beautiful, which is underpinned by the economist E.F. Schumacher. I think it'd be helpful to have this information in the public domain so that we can be informed as representatives of our wards. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Lee. councillor Todd, please.
Thank you very much indeed. All the resource that is currently, so as this process goes on, more and more issues are becoming clear, more and more questions and details and plans need to be worked through and all the resource that is available is being put into doing the work to make sure that we have a robust proposal that is as local as possible, connected to local communities and will, will deliver the best outcomes for our residents. There is not time or capacity for extra work to be laid on top of that. There, this is going to be a very tough and difficult argument of negotiation that is going on at the moment between the approach that we're taking, the approach that the county's taking and indeed the approach that some other councils within the group of thirteen or twelve, I think it is now, are taking. So I absolutely understand that having more information available would be of interest to people. But at the moment, I don't see how that could be reflected in the actions that we take. I'm very happy to have conversations. If you have, I mean, I have sent you whatever it is, a hundred and eighty-seven pages. If you have any comments on those, I'm very happy to listen to them. But we are at a stage where we are driving towards submitting a proposal on extremely tight timelines that has to go into an enormous amount of detail about finance, service delivery, how we redesign and reshape local authorities in, in Hampshire. We will, of course, bring as much information as we possibly can to enable people to make a response to the decision and the submission that we proposed, proposed to make in September. But we are not able to do anything more than that other than to focus on achieving the extremely difficult timing that we have to make. We will do so in as open and involving We will do so in as open and involving a way as possible. That may involve, that will involve, I think, and will need to involve more member briefings and discussions. But what it can't do is setting up an entire new process of making, of creating a dataset suitable for sharing, making it widely available, not least because it's absolutely unclear to me how we would be able to make any meaningful reaction to that or response to that as the decision-making process goes forward.
Thank you, councillor Todd. Councillor Williams, this is question six.
Thank you very much, Mister Mayor. Can the cabinet member please update residents and myself on the progress of refurbishing the public toilets in Bishopswaltham?
Councillor Baker, please.
Thank you and thank you, councillor Williams, for your question. I am really happy, actually, to be asked this because following the improvements to the Abbey Garden toilets, the Market Lane toilets and the Cheshill Street multi-storey car park toilets, the Bishopswaltham toilets are the latest set of Winchester City Council public toilets, it's a lot of toilets in that sentence, to be improved as part of our public toilets improvement strategy. The works to improve the toilets commenced externally on the twenty-third of June twenty twenty-five, comprising roof repairs, replacement guttering and external decorations. Internal works were paused at the request of the parish council due to the Kids' Treat event, which took place over the weekend of the fifth to the seventh of July, which I understand was also supported by this council. And the internal works recommenced yesterday, the eighth of July, and they are expected to continue for the next six weeks, which will give Bishopswaltham a much improved set of public toilets.
Thank you, councillor Baker. Councillor William, do you have a supplementary? Thank you.
Thank you, Mister Mayor. Yes, no, thank you. And I note the appreciation certainly of the parish council as well in the Kids' Treat event, especially as Winchester provided extra cleaning as part of that event in the High Street as well this past Sunday. As part of the toilets refurbishment project in Bishopswaltham, the council are also improving the external appearance of the adjoining social club building. Could you detail which works are taking place on the social club?
Baker, please.
Thank you. Yes, as you say, we are also undertaking repairs to the social club at the same time because frankly, it just makes sense. So the work is being done as one single piece of work. We're replacing the gutters that jointly serve the two buildings, replacing some missing roof tiles and just making it look much nicer. So there's not one side that has been done and the other side that hasn't. We have one building that all looks lovely and refurbished.
Thank you, councillor Baker. This is question number seven. Councillor Gottfried, please.
Thank you, Mister Mayor. I'm increasingly concerned by the mounting pressure on local businesses of multiple cost increases on top of underlying cash flow pressures associated with falling consumer confidence, which was down five point four percent just last month. Local businesses are feeling the pressure with rising national insurance costs, reduced business rates relief, along with a four percent decrease in footfall in Winchester over quarter one compared to last year, which is in contrast to a national rise in footfall of two percent over the same period. The Q one bid report specifically refers to parking being an issue and suggests extension to park and ride capacity. This administration could and should relax early evening parking charges and increase the park and ride capacity. Two things squarely in their power to protect Winchester's economy. Will you act now before it's too late?
Thank you, councillor Gottfried. Councillor Lerni, please.
Thank you, Mister Mayor. We continually monitor footfall and the use of our car parks to balance keeping the town thriving with reducing city centre congestion and pollution. The latest three months of publicly available bid statistics show a two and a half percent year-on-year increase in footfall compared to a national increase of two percent. Our own latest figures show an annual increase in use of two percent in the central car parks, nine percent in the park and walk car parks and five percent in park and ride. We have over twelve hundred free evening and Sunday parking spaces in our park and walk car parks, which are being very well used, and over seven and a half thousand visitors per month are taking advantage of the free hour available in those car parks during the day. This shows our strategy encouraging visitors to come to the city, but if they come by car, to park outside the centre is succeeding. We are also working to introduce additional park and ride to the north of the city at Sir John Moore Barracks and at King's Barton. With the opening of the Barfield Phase Two car park, the park and rides remain both well-used and well within their capacities on a day-to-day basis outside the Christmas peak. Unfortunately, the complaint by businesses around parking referred to in the bid report of aggressive and over officious on-street parking wardens making deliveries and pickups in the city centre difficult is now out of our control. But I am happy to make representations to the county council about the problems this is causing for businesses.
Thank you, councillor Lerni. Councillor Gottfried, would you have a supplementary?
Thank you, Mister Mayor. I'm grateful for the answer. And yet, over the last six years, many independent businesses in the centre of Winchester have closed up. The council continues to add pressure on the local economy. And no tangible progress has been made to replace these jobs and businesses with the much-needed employment spaces around the city. Will the administration do anything during the next year to reverse the economic decline of Winchester compared with the rest of the country?
Councillor Lerni, please.
Thank you. Councillor Gottfried's statements are totally contrary to the facts on the ground, which do show that footfall is up annually. They also show that vacancies have fallen over the past year. Again, a positive economic picture. It is inevitable that over time shops will change. We have some independents closing, we have some new independents moving in, and this is part of a normal churn over time as we see city centres evolve. I certainly remember in Winchester in the seventies when everybody was complaining about the High Street being full of shoe shops and building societies. Now, we now complain that we've got too many restaurants and phone shops, but I think this is part of what happens in cities over time. Working with councillor Thompson, I will be continuing to look at parking strategy and how we best enable people to come into town. And that isn't just around coming in by car. That is also around looking at our bus offer, making sure we have good cycle paths and cycle parking. But there is a whole range of things. Councillor Becker earlier referred to the toilet refurbishments we've been undertaking to make our city a more attractive space. And we have also increased the amount of cleaning in the town centre. So all in all, I think we're offering a very attractive package. Businesses want to be in Winchester and will continue to work to make sure that carries on.
Thank you, councillor Lerni. I will have one more question. Question eight, councillor Latton, please.
Thank you, Mister Mayor. I offer my congratulations to the portfolio holder and indeed the entire council for the recent announcement by Climate Emergency UK that Winchester City Council is the best performing district council in the country for its action on climate change. Drilling into the details, though, whilst we receive the highest marks in the buildings and heating and planning and land use categories, our lowest score, and in fact, the only category where we scored below the national average, is for waste reduction and food. In the interest of continuing with our goal to go greener faster, can I ask the cabinet member what we'll be doing to improve our score still further in this category? Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Latton. Councillor Lerni, please.
Thank you, councillor Latton. It is very gratifying to see the hard work of staff across the council in response to the greener faster agenda set by members recognised in this way. The principal reason we scored poorly in this section is our recycling system. While Winchester is one of the top performing waste recycling authorities in Hampshire, Hampshire as a whole has gone from a leader in recycling to one with an aging disposal infrastructure which cannot deal with the range of recycling available in many other areas. The introduction of food waste recycling, which will roll out this autumn, will make a significant impact on our performance, improving our service to residents, our recycling rate and the district's carbon footprint. Reducing the amount of residual waste further, however, will have to await Hampshire County Council's construction of a new materials recycling facility, which was granted planning permission in twenty twenty-two but has since been beset by indecisiveness. This is now not due to be operational until the end of twenty twenty-seven at the earliest. Despite this, this council is already preparing to be able to implement the new system, which will include the recycling of plastic pots, tubs and trays at the earliest opportunity.
Thank you, councillor Lerni. Councillor Latton, do you have a supplementary?
Thank you, Mister Mayor. No, no further questions. Thank you.
I think we are close to about forty minutes of the question time. The questions we have not. No, I think that's it. No. So we have reached the forty minutes nearly there. The questions which were asked but haven't been answered, the answers will be published on the website. Thank you, members. That concludes the formal business for this evening. Please, can officers end the broadcast? Thank you. You're all invited to the Abbey House for drink and perhaps some crisps. So, come again?